I'd like to call to me to order the April 3, 2018 meeting of the Lake Mills City Council. Would you all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all beings.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Present.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Knippel?
Do you know whether we heard anything from Mr. Knippel?
No.
We did not.
I did not hear anything myself.
Yeah, he's probably recuperating from Easter break. Okay, corrections and approval of the city council minutes of March 20, 2018.
So move.
And then is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Upstee.
Okay. That takes us to number four, correspondence. I'll take correspondence from the council members first.
I've had an email from one of the residents on the Mill Pond, kind of urging us to take it back to where it used to be, their longstanding residence, and thought it 20 years ago that it was in a lot better shape and more depth, so I think that was shared with a few other people.
And I believe you and I are the only ones that got that email?
I think Steve was copied also.
Okay. He requested that we send a copy to the other three council members. Would somebody be willing to do that?
Yeah, I think I did, but I'll check.
Did you guys get a letter? No, they didn't get it yet. But I know I and Steve, I'm both got it. He did also mention some problems with the bridges in the letter. So I think maybe that's something when the weather warms up a little bit, I'll personally go out and take a look at and see whether or not we need to address those sooner than later, so.
As is consistent with Strand did an inspection last fall on the highway bridge, on the road bridge.
Okay.
And that came back pretty solid.
Okay.
The one pedestrian bridge probably does need some work that the Parks Department usually does in the spring, first thing, so I wouldn't be surprised at that.
When you forward the email, could you please copy Misty? Because as the clerk, she's always supposed to get a copy.
Maybe that's the only one I sent it to, is Misty.
Okay.
Because I know I forwarded it.
Thanks.
It says it's been forwarded on my thing, so.
Okay, good. Thank you for doing that. All righty. I think that pretty much takes, does anybody else have any correspondence?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. Questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages action by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council? And I don't think we have anybody here to do that tonight, so I will close the questions and public comment. That takes us to the city manager's report. I believe you were gonna have an update on the brush pickup? Is that something that?
I have a couple items here I'll go over.
Okay, thank you.
The city public works department has scheduled the spring brush pickup from Wednesday, April 18 to Wednesday, April 25. Twice a year, city crews conduct a free brush and yard waste pickup. This includes brush neatly stacked with butt ends facing with the flow of traffic placed on the terrace. Other yard waste, i.e. weeds, old plants, leaves, et cetera, may be placed separately from the brush on the terrace and will also be picked up. Brush to be picked up should be neatly stacked, again. Brush put out after April 25th will not be picked up and should be taken to the yard waste center. The information is also available on the city's website, and I think it will be published in the paper, and it's currently running on cable TV.
And also, the earliest people should put it out is the Saturday before, which is the 14th, because it'll just blow around and get in the street and kill whatever grass is coming up at that point. So the 18th through the 25th, those are Wednesday and Wednesday, so.
Yep.
Other items?
There's gonna be a public information meeting on the Mulberry Street project on April 19th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Lake Mills Community Center. A brief presentation will be given at 6:00 p.m. City staff, the design consultants will also be here. We'll also have some representatives from DOT who can speak to both of the Mulberry Street project and actually the Madison, or the Main Street project. It's not actually a Main Street PIM. We will hold a separate public information meeting for the Main Street project sometime in the next two to three months. As, I'll discuss a little bit more later, but this one is going to be, this letter will be mailed to the public, or at least people impacted by the project, and there's a map of the project area, so you can see what, that dark line there. The dash line is actually an old right-of-way that doesn't have a street built in it, but it will be used for stormwater. This is Fargo, and it's included because we're, a portion of this area will have stormwater tied into Fargo, and then the rest of the area, stormwater and sanitary, will flow down this way, so that's how the project breaks out. Brandon will probably be going over that more here shortly. Wanted to make sure everyone saw this. Let me see if I can get that. This is the library, and this is the new parking lot.
The building we tore down?
Where the building was torn down, right. So we're actually working, this'll eliminate this handicapped ramp problem here that we have.
The what?
The handicapped ramp problem.
Handicapped.
This handicapped, people want to come up this part of the handicap, the stair, and it's, it's not a handicapped accessible there. You gotta come all the way down to here and come up the sidewalk. Well, nobody's doing that, so we get a few slips and trips. What this parking lot will do is it'll raise that pavement up to match with the step-in, so it'll be fully handicapped, accessible from anywhere. Then we'll add more parking spaces, and then there'll be a driveway out onto Oak, so you can come in from Madison and actually exit out onto Oak.
Oh, that'll be nice.
And go back down through that narrow.
Mm-hmm.
This is something that we're working on. You may see this.
Were those parking spots, that were, that looked like parking spots?
Yep.
Along the side?
These are all parking spots.
Oh, that'll be nice.
This is a walkway up and then in.
Mm-hmm.
And this is a stormwater detention basin right here.
Okay.
So.
Are we looking at doing that this summer?
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna try.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe some of you will remember this.
Okay, give us more of a clue.
Come on.
Is this a rough?
You should know that, just like this. This is 26 acres in the industrial park.
Oh, okay.
This is our permit that the DNR's had for two years, and it looks like we're getting to the end of the line.
Really?
Should be able to have a advertised, ready to shovel-ready site this summer on I emailed this to all of you, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It outlines the meeting that staff had with.
Yes, yes, we all got it.
DOT, and it goes over, you know, kind of what happened, what we, what we're trying to anticipate will occur. The main item coming out of this is that they're gonna relet the bid, probably in early November, the award date sometime, well, an opening date in late November, so that they get people who still don't have work already lined up for 19. Hopefully, they'll get more bids. There's a whole list of sidewalk issues and street issues that we submitted to We Energies and Intercon for fixing sidewalks and streets, and they're, they're required to also fix the yards. So if, you know, I've seen some people saying, well, I want my yard fixed back up, if they're not, well, they will have to do that. Either Peaper or Intercon. Peaper representing Lake Mills Public Utilities and Intercon, We Energies, so. And We, and Intercon has done all the sidewalk work. And they will be here for a while yet, because they have to do exactly the same thing that they've done on the west side of the street, on the east side of the street. So they'll be out there a while tearing up the sidewalks. Are there any questions on any of that that you were interested in?
I just wanted to mention that if people do come on Wednesday, April 19th, when it's the Mulberry Street time from 6:00 to 7:00, if, if there are people that come from the South Main project, if they would please not bring up South Main until the people of Mulberry get a chance to answer their questions, and then this, you know.
Yeah, generally, what we do is, is they have a brief presentation, and then they have kind of people set to the sides, and you can go talk to the person who you think is, has the issue that you're most interested in, so like single source and the, and the temporary limited easement acquisition, or Rob will be there, so you can talk to him about the trees. The guys that are doing the South Main Street project will be by themselves, so after the initial presentation, you can go over and just talk to them.
Okay.
But they, if, you know, if you can't make that meeting, or you want to be more, there will be more information generated and available at the actual South Main Street public information meeting, which will probably occur sometime midsummer.
Mm-hmm.
So, but if you have any issues that you want to bring up right now, you're more than welcome to attend. They, they are going to attend the meeting.
Okay, that's good, though, that you have separate, separate people, because otherwise I think you might get frustrated, people who thought they were there for their thing. Okay, good. Thanks for the information. Does anybody on the council have other questions or ask for updates on anything else?
Will the meeting, 19th, be downstairs?
Yes.
Community room.
Did I send you the electric proposals? I think I forgot.
No.
Diane asked for the difference between Mill Berry, the part that we proposed to bury in the historic district, and All Berry. And so I do have those estimates I can send out to you.
Okay.
The bike trail, the construction is pretty much, I think we have 300 feet left, and a couple culvert pipes to install, and then we'll be done, so we can finalize that grant. The dam is done.
Hooray.
We're looking at redoing the industrial park signs, so we've asked for some design concepts, so.
Where will it be put?
Probably in the same locations they are now, in the islands.
On the islands?
Yeah.
By Astalin Engineering?
Yes, and by Selgin.
And by Selgin, okay.
And then there's, we're looking at one down on.
Two strides, okay.
Oh, three.
Three.
We're looking at a new one down on CP Avenue by the, well.
Well, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
The Mangan Agreement has been signed and finalized. Everything's done.
So we will see.
Construction.
More construction along I-94 now, okay.
Is there any estimate when they would tentatively be completed?
Well, they're gonna try and have six buildings done this year.
Is it?
Before the snow flies?
Yes.
Is that one-third of their project?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we wish them luck, and we hope everything goes well. May they not run into any bugaboos along the way, for our sake and their sake, so. Okay.
The lead service lateral issues on South Main Street. Our grant was for a three-year time period, which runs out in the beginning of next year. Actually, did have a six-month grace period, but we didn't want to have to replace all the lead lateral services on South Main Street this year, because that $5,000 that we have to pay for our portion isn't reimbursed, and so you could be looking at $200,000 to $300,000, or the costs that we would then tear out immediately first thing next, next year.
That would not be good.
No, so we're trying to keep those people from installing and us having to, to do that work.
Also, it would upset the lateral lines to the point of increasing the lead, wouldn't it?
If you do one without the other, yes.
That's what I'm saying.
If you do the one side or the other without, it does increase the.
Yeah, we don't want to do that either.
Not if we can help it. We give them a picture that they can use to clean the water with, but it's best not to do them all at once.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
People are gonna start noticing that we're getting more aggressive on getting into inspected lead services. We were supposed to be done by July of this year, and we're not, and I think we're about 40% right now, so we're gonna have to get significantly more aggressive.
Is the Grant Street road closure part of lead servicing, right on Main Street and Grant?
The work that's being done now?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and was it the same on, was it Oak or Washington? One of the two has.
It's probably, those, we've noticed the trend is, is that, what? Oak, Washington, Fargo.
Grant.
And Grant probably have the heaviest concentration of lead services in the city.
Because of the age of the neighborhood?
Yep.
Okay.
You also notice that we're gonna be replacing electric and water meters pretty intensely in the next year. Hopefully, every electric meter in the service area will be replaced, and we're gonna try and get as many water meters replaced as we possibly can, because we're gonna be on the AMI system now.
What's the AMI?
Automatic Meter.
Okay, infrastructure, okay.
Tonight, we have the cross connection ordinance on. We've got, probably on April 10th, we're going to notice a violation meeting with the DNR. They're probably gonna tell us that we have to have a corrosion, well, cross connection ordinance in place and start doing the inspections. And seeing as we're doing all the water meters, we would like to be able to do those at the same time, and the residential ones. And the industri, industrial and manufacturing ones, we send them a letter that we already have pretty much prepared that says you're required to submit an inspection every two years.
Since you're under the gun, do you want us to suspend the rules tonight?
We would like that, yeah.
Okay.
We would like to have a passed ordinance to take next Tuesday.
So do all three tonight, okay.
We have a water rate study that is 99% done.
Yeah.
That's pretty much it. The rest I'll talk to you about later.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for updating us on, on the items you did. That takes us to item number seven, acceptance of minutes of library board for February 19th, 2018, the police and fire commission for February 15th this year, housing authority February 27th this year, and planning commission November 28th, 2017. And those, those minutes will be placed on file. Taking us to council business, item 8A, council, I mean, committee and board appointments. That goes to Steve. That's your appointment?
Yes, for the police and fire commission, I'd like to thank Pam Rogers for her service. She has decided not to refile again this year for the police and fire commission. She was the chairperson of that commission. Dean Sanders has filed, and we actually had two people file for the position. I've decided to appoint Dean Sanders to the position, and another young man. I'll ask if he wants to serve on another committee in the interim until something else comes along. So if, I wanted to let you know that I've made that appointment.
Okay, thank you. Item B, miscellaneous licenses, tavern operator's license. Would you read the applicant's name, please?
Mary Pecoraro.
Okay. And I would entertain a motion to approve the tavern operator's license for her.
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Okay, takes us to item C, overview of reconstruction of Mulberry Street. Ta-da, 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 ta-da.
Brandon's here tonight. He did a presentation at the public works board, and we also wanted to do one here so that you had as much information.
Thank you for coming again.
Vicky gets to set through a second one. It's pretty much the same information, a few additional items, some of which I probably already covered. But anyways, here's Brandon Herbert. He's the lead engineer for the city on this project, and he can inform you what's going on.
Okay, can you switch over to the? Yeah. All right. Well, thanks for the opportunity to work with the city on this project and present tonight. I'm Brandon Herbert, as Steve said, and the project manager, leading the design of this project. This is for Mulberry Street. A little bit of overview of the presentation here. This is gonna be very similar to what we did at the first public information meeting, and then also at the public works board meeting. So first of all, I'll talk about the project location and limits, some of the funding mechanisms and the anticipated costs, the current project schedule, the project scope, roadway cross-section, which has changed since the first public information meeting, impacts on city trees, because that's always very important and popular subject, the proposed detour during the project, and then the historic district that was identified on the project Here you see the project limits. Steve already kind of covered this, but the rotary construction project is the, shown in orange there, and then there's gonna be a little bit of a stormwater conveyance subsegment there that comes down, kind of vacant street right-of-way that is already currently being used for stormwater drainage, just not quite up to Mulberry Street. So we're gonna take stormwater down that blue line, down Fargo Street, and then also down to an existing storm sewer pipe on Madison Street. Important to note that the Fargo Street stormwater segment has been in the planning for probably four years now. When we did Brown's Court Reconstruction Project, city crews took the storm sewer up Fargo to Brown's Court, and it's currently set up to be connected to at the Brown's Court and Fargo intersection. So we've kind of looking at this for a while now, and there's been some investment already in getting the stormwater out that way on Fargo. Here, I got a little bit more of a zoomed-in kind of engineering view, I guess, of the project limits. The reason why I brought this up is to show you that on some, most of all the intersections, we're keeping the project pretty tight to Mulberry, that it doesn't go on to the side streets very far. We're taking it pretty much around the radius on each side street. There will be stormwater inlets on most of those intersections that catch a lot of the roads coming into Mulberry Street. And then, of course, that's showing the block of Fargo, and then up at the top right, some of that drainage way down the existing right-of-way.
The drainage thing is behind Lila and assisted living, the drain ditch.
Yep, yep.
The ditch, it's a ditch.
Yeah, it's, that exists, that one that is, you know, noticeably a drainage ditch now will just continue to the north up to Mulberry. It kind of gets smaller and smaller, and eventually just kind of fizzles out right now as you go towards Mulberry, but for part of it, it'll be a storm sewer pipe, and then there's a block there where the southern half of the block is a noticeable ditch, and we'll be cutting that ditch, similar looking up to the next street up, which I'm blanking on the name of what it is.
Reed or?
Reed, I think.
And Pope?
Pope, I think.
You're gonna go, probably gonna go under Pope, and then outlet in between Pope and Reed.
Yeah, I think, yeah. So some of the project funding and costs. This project was funded through the State Transportation Program, Urban Grant Program, which the city was awarded a grant of up to $1,180,000. That $1,180,000 is the total, total grant, but the city is responsible for 20% match on that. So the city got $944,000 of, I guess you could say, free money that can be used. It's a use-it-or-lose-it situation for the physical construction of roadway and storm sewer, sidewalks, urban gutter, those type of infrastructure. The money can't be used towards the city's water or sanitary sewer infrastructure, so the remaining costs above that $944,000 are sole city responsibility, even if it is for roadway and storm sewer type work. The original project scope that we applied for was from Oak to Fargo only, and we requested a scope expansion for a number of reasons. Those reasons included that that's kind of a mid-segment of the Mulberry Street corridor, that some of the underground utilities, that's kind of an odd spot to just reconstruct that section. We already discussed the stormwater conveyance. To get stormwater off of that segment, you would have had to have gone down to Madison, and then up to Fargo as well. And then also, the current limits up to Grant Street are more, from Madison to Grant, are more of like a logical termini that the, the grant agencies like to see that you're taking a project from, you know, more of a heavily-used roadway to another heavily-used roadway, and you're not just constructing a, a segment of a, of an important corridor there. Right now, we are at 60% design completion, and our, our estimated roadway costs at this point are 2.82 million, and that cost includes that block of Fargo. And then a preliminary sanitary sewer and water main cost, 1.57 million, bringing the total cost to 4.39 million. There's a possible request for additional funding through the grant program, but I've been told by the WISDOT local program administrator that while we technically could apply, the likelihood of us getting additional funding is very low, because they already granted a, a scope expansion, and the size of the project is fairly substantial, and there's limited money in this program, and so I was told that the likelihood of them giving more money to Lake Mills versus other communities and other projects would be low. But we, he certainly said we could apply if we would like to, given that the project costs are above what the grant is. So I guess we'll have to decide if we want to take that, you know, opportunity or chance, if you will, to apply. Potentially a low likelihood of success, but small, small chance so that we could get some additional funding.
It never hurts to try.
Yeah.
Of course, it costs us money if we do that.
Yes.
True. Yeah. Yeah, very astute trade-off there, yeah. The current project schedule, we had our first public information, information meeting on October 21, 24, 2016. Our 60% design was formally approved, kind of a package that we submitted as part of that 60% level was formally approved on February 18th this year. Our temporary easement acquisition is ongoing. We started that fairly recently in March here, and it's anticipated to go through the summer. Public information meeting number two, as Steve mentioned and you guys discussed, will be Thursday, April 19th at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. We will complete the final design after that meeting, taking into account any comments or changes that the public or others, you know, staff or people might like to see as we work. as we work towards a final plan specs and estimate PS and E date to WISDOT August 1 this year. With that PS and E date, we're set to be scheduled for bid letting January 9. That would be the advertisement date that it would be available for bidders, and then about a month later, we would receive our actual bid prices. And then construction is currently scheduled for April through October 2019, and that is still a current schedule even after what has happened with the Main Street project. Some of the project scope, it addresses existing deficiencies. We have new asphalt pavement for the entire length of the project, new curb and gutter, sidewalk and curb ramps the entire way as well. We will be addressing some ADA accessibility issues. Many of the curb ramps in this section and sidewalk grades are not ADA compliant right now. We'll be fixing those issues with the project. There's also some intersections that have poor visibility, mostly due to the grades around the intersection that we'll be addressing as well. You can see some nodding that Oak specifically is a pretty poor one, and there's some others that aren't desirable as well. We'll be putting storm sewer in. The road currently has some storm sewer, but it's limited and undersized, and so this will be properly-sized storm sewer for the entire length of the project and actually planning for future expansion to address other storm sewer deficiencies that I'll talk about a little bit later.
So we're going to lose Lake Mulberry?
Yeah. Is that a bad thing?
Oh, that'll be, yeah, there were no fish in it anyway.
Oh, man, did you try? We'll also be putting a new sanitary sewer, the whole length, which is replacing pretty aging infrastructure there as well. And then there's also some slope deficiencies that are below current design standards. We'll have new sewer laterals to the right of way. New water main the entire length as well, again, undersized and aging infrastructure replacement. New water services to the right of way as well, which will come along with some lead service replacements, certainly on the city side, but likely on the private side as well. We'll also have new pavement markings and new signage on the project as well. Some of the project scope that addresses future needs I've shown here. Storm sewer will be available for extension to the north and west. On the exhibit on the right here, we drew up, or I guess we evaluated and then drew up an exhibit that shows current storm sewer drainage patterns. And so this is Grant Street right here, and this is Mulberry. And the north end of our project, sorry about the old mouse thing here. I'm not sure I've turned that off, but the edge of the project is right here. This is the storm sewer pipe that goes down that vacant right of way that we discussed. And you'll see that some of these areas kind of drain at Mulberry. There's a good section of Prospect that comes down towards Moss, and then Moss that comes towards Mulberry Street. There's currently a valley gutter right here that helps the drainage right now. But this storm sewer will be sized and set up so that it can be extended up Mulberry and then up Moss Street to catch Moss and then also some of Prospect here. We were showing it in this exhibit. The city staff has seen it ending right here, but it would also be available to extend up Prospect a little bit as well. And then you'll notice that a lot of the other areas kind of drain away from Mulberry and are already working into existing storm sewer and ditches that kind of take it into these basins and this wetland pond area over here. So the general thought is that once this Mulberry Street is constructed, this kind of whole area, actually all the way up to Birch Street, will be pretty well set up for stormwater drainage and better surface water drainage to help extend the life of the pavements. We did some storm sewer work up here on Birch Street and Birch Court a couple of years ago, so that we're kind of taking care of the stormwater needs of this whole area. And then also utilities at intersections will be set up for future projects. So this whole neighborhood of the Mulberry Street area has the similar issues with aging water main and sanitary sewer and things. And so one example that I kind of blew up here for you to look at is, here's the existing water main, and we're going to take the new water main out and connect it over. And this is set up so that we're meeting the eight feet required off of sanitary sewer for new water main, and so that when Franklin, wherever, to get reconstructed, you could just hook onto the water main here and start laying new water main. And so it's kind of set up nicely for future projects, I guess. The roadway cross-section has changed since public information meeting number one. There was pretty unanimous consent that they wanted a parking lane on Mulberry, as you have now. There's parking there now. We had initially proposed a typical section that had just travel lanes and, they had just travel lanes. And that was initially proposed because the roadway widens, or sorry, narrows if you don't have a parking lane, therefore it's less expensive. And then also the impacts on the trees and, you know, other things outside the roadway, like the power poles would have been avoided, or lessened, I should say. But due to the public's response, we put a parking lane back onto the project, which resulted in a proposed cross-section that's two feet wider than the existing roadway, approximately one foot on each side of the existing roadway, pretty much centered on where the existing road is. That would provide 11-foot driving lanes and an eight-foot parking lane. This cross-section, although wider than what was initially proposed, is still pretty narrow for providing that parking lane. 11-foot driving lanes are, I guess you could say, middle of the road for acceptable driving lane with 10 feet to 12 feet is kind of the normal range for driving with, travel lane with. And then an eight-foot parking lane is also pretty much minimum. So we're trying to keep the road narrow, less impacts on the trees, less expensive for the city. But then also to minimize the impacts on terrace with for snow storage, the trees, and then some impacts to the historic district that I'll talk about a little bit later.
Okay.
Here's a, I don't know. There's kind of a graphical depiction of that cross-section I described. I'll start on the right, at the right of way, we have a 66-foot right of way. The new sidewalk will be about a foot off the right of way. You'll have a five-foot sidewalk, which is ADA compliant width. Then a 10-and-a-half-foot terrace, two-and-a-half-foot wide curb and gutter, 11-foot driving lane, and another 11-foot driving lane, then six feet of additional asphalt, and then another two-and-a-half feet of curb and gutter. And I mentioned earlier, it would be an eight-foot parking lane. Well, you can count the curb pan as part of the parking lane, so there'll be two feet of curb pan, so two plus the six is your eight feet for parking. And then the 10-and-a-half again, and five-foot sidewalk, and then another foot to the right of way.
It's 10-and-a-half feet? Doesn't that seem a little big for a terrace?
Seem what?
It's 10-and-a-half feet?
No, that's, it's a little undersized. We like them to be 12, but, yeah.
To me, that seems big, because I might have four.
Well, when you, when you look at South Main Street at four, yeah, that's pretty big. But you want to make sure it's big enough for snow storage and trees and poles and all that type of stuff. South Main Street is really cramped. That's why we have to take all the trees out. That's why we're proposing to go with smaller trees that go back in. This one won't have those significant issues.
Is that going to cause people to lose a little bit more lawn than they have now?
They will have less lawn than they have now because the street will be one foot wider on each side, and the sidewalk is five feet instead of four feet. So the tree lawn will be a little bit smaller than it has historically been, but...
Well, that's, yeah.
It'll still be in the same.
For some houses, a fifty-foot, you're almost on top of them, it would seem like.
Well, I think it's important to note the back of the sidewalk is going back in almost all places, right where it is now.
Yeah.
So they'll have less tree lawn, but in terms of like what people consider their lawn, I guess, on the backside of the sidewalk will be the same.
Oh, okay.
And really, the only way that that terrace would get smaller is if you move the sidewalk out or widen the road. But the sidewalk being a foot off the right of way is pretty standard, kind of a good delineator for where the right of way line is.
On the sidewalks, are we going to take up all existing sidewalk?
Yes.
What's going to go underneath the sidewalk?
Uh, the, yeah, there's, well, I guess there's a base course that you put down.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, what utilities are going to go under? Anything going under the sidewalk, or will it all go in the tree lawn?
I don't, I'm not aware of anything that'll go under the sidewalk right now. Well, I guess maybe some of the underground electric might go near the sidewalk.
I don't think it'll go under the sidewalk. We talked about it, and we think we can get the electric out. There'll be some that'll go back and forth under the sidewalk. What the gas company does, and I'm pretty sure that the cable and telephone will go with the electric, but what the gas company does, I don't know. But from the construction standpoint, we're not proposing to put anything under the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'll, the sewer and water will be in the street?
Sewer will be in the street. Water will be towards the edge.
And storm sewer will also be in the street?
Yes, the storm sewer will also be in the street.
Will property owners be given an opportunity to hook up their sump pumps to the storm sewer?
We hadn't designed that in because that takes, that takes a lot of additional, that's like an additional service, an additional sanitary sewer service. And I didn't notice that there were a lot of basements that needed pumping on the street, not like on Water Street. We did do that on Water Street.
I think some of the sump pumps pump to the back of the yards because the Mulberry Street side is higher than the backyards on Mulberry, for some lots, not all lots, but for many, so we, I know.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that the city paid for it, but if the property owner wanted to pay for the cost of doing that, it would make sense to do it while everything's being dug up.
That's true. I mean, we can certainly ask people if they have an issue, if they have a sub-pump that pumps pretty often and they want to tie it in.
Yeah, it's better than going into the sanitary sewer.
Yep, definitely.
Which is probably where they go if they have a need.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'll list and bring that up as potential question, I guess, or a topic for discussion at the PIM. People, hopefully, we get it to good turnout, and people can tell us yes or no that they have an issue or they might want to connect.
Does anybody know, will Rob have an idea of which trees are the 46 trees that are? He will know kind of good.
They're all Xed on the plans already, as far as I know.
Yep.
Okay. It'd be nice to know.
Yeah.
So we can have tree-dying parties, funerals. We can have funerals on our street.
And I should, I should say that's based on street and sewer and water construction and sidewalk.
It's, yeah.
The electric could have a different impact.
So, good segue, thank you for that, to the next slide, impacts on existing city trees. There was 119 trees identified in the project limits. The city forester was given the project limits and asked to identify any trees that he would normally want to take down, you know, due to poor condition, disease, impact on overhead electric lines. You know, I think that pretty much encompasses the main reasons. And he identified 25 trees that he thought probably should come down for various reasons. The project design required the removal of 21 additional trees, which, as Steve mentioned, is due primarily to terrace grading or underground utilities. That means things like at Oak Street where the terrace is really high, and there's a tree in there, well, it's probably a better idea to cut the terrace down and make the intersection safe. Well, if you cut the terrace down three feet, you've got to get rid of the tree that's in the terrace. So things like that. There is a number of other areas where the existing water service, for instance, might go right under a tree. And it's pretty difficult to swoop around it and hook in back behind it. Sometimes it's sanitary and water. Specifically with sanitary, you know, you just don't have the lateral moving leeway that you can to hook up to that. You kind of have to go straight at it most of the time. So sometimes that unfortunately will take out trees as well. Important to note that all the trees removed by the project are intended to be replaced, kind of as you may have seen throughout the city. When new streets get built or streets get reconstructed, Rob will come in sometime after the project's done and plant, you know, new terrace trees of, you know, various species and at the kind of standard innovability he likes to see. So that is in the plan, that they'd all be replaced.
We do have a few trees on Mulberry Street, though, that were originally planted too close to the intersection. And I'm hoping we aren't replacing them in the same place. But we can replace them maybe downways so that they're not blocking the view.
Yeah, good point. I mean, and they're intended to be replaced like in number, let's say, but not in the exact.
That's important to say because the people who drive it regularly, they kind of go, because they keep coming out from the intersection, and then there is something, and they're going, eh! Everybody goes, oh, there's a car!
Yeah, yeah. So and imagine they'd be more centered on the terrace than maybe some of them are now, which would pull them back from the road and... Oops.
Mother Nature has already removed a couple trees on Mulberry in the last few years, so that means we don't have to.
Yeah, Rob has taken down a couple already as well. He may have noticed that he... How about that? Having some quicker range issues. So I mentioned earlier that a historic district was identified on the project. You might be aware of this already. And it was, it's eligible for registration on the National Register of Historic Districts. On the right here, you can kind of see the outline of it. Goes from just north of Franklin here down to Oak Street. I believe there's 10 properties that are considered contributing to the historic district. The ones that are in these red-hatched areas are physically inside the boundaries, but they're not considered contributing resources. Because of the identification of this historic district, some of the project constraints were matching in like right at the existing back of walk, and that's to preserve some of the features of those properties that contribute to the historic nature, such as this wrought iron fence that I've shown in the picture here. You know, we'll be matching in right at the back of walk here, and similar with the Fargo Mansion up here, they have a concrete wall right there that in a number of cases, if there wasn't that historic element present right behind the sidewalk, we would probably lower the sidewalk and grade back into the yard to try and help some of the terrace grades from not being quite as steep. There's some, some of these historic properties have steps down to the curb line. And we were told that if you impact behind the right of way specifically, if there's a feature like a fence or a wall, and then even if you took away the steps, which were kind of historic steps down to what would be like a carriage stop or a carriage walk, that that would change the historic nature of the property, and therefore you're discouraged from doing that. And so I bring this up because there might be some areas where after the construction is complete, you might look at a terrace and be like, well, that seems pretty steep still. I thought we were kind of fixing some of the stuff that, that it was left essentially as-is to preserve the historic nature of the historic district and contributing properties. So that was, I thought, important to note, that we're preserving as much of the historic character as we can. Oh, I guess I covered some of this already, but there was 12 resources in the district, 10 contributing. They were all constructed between 1854 and 1921. It was considered a historic district because these resources or these houses illustrate the development of residential architecture in the city. And then also that some of these houses have a longstanding association with members of the Fargo family, which were considered like a founding family of Lake Mills. And so for all these reasons, this district was considered eligible for the historic register. There are also some potential benefits for these houses that there's grants that are available for maintenance of historic property that they can apply for. And I think it's also important to note that it doesn't forbid them from doing anything to their house. Sometimes people think that if they get, you know, declare historic eligible, they now can't do anything to the house. I can't consider myself an expert on those rules, but I've heard it said many times to make people aware that it's not, this isn't changing anything that you can do to your house. In fact, it maybe makes more resources available financially for you to kind of maintain that historic house.
There are different kinds of historic designations, and the one we're doing doesn't have all those restrictions on. There are some, though... There are some though where you can't change the wallpaper in the house and things like that, but that's not the one that we're at.
That's not my understanding.
No, it isn't.
Okay.
Did the state do all the underlying work that's required in order to get a district registered? Or is there going to be a financial responsibility on the part of the city to do that?
No, we don't have any responsibility to do it. It was, it was kind of like Main Street Downtown on the Main Street one. It was considered a historic district, but because there was no impact, we didn't have to do any work. Whereas on the South one, there was an impact, so we had to file. And actually DOT did the work on that one. This one, we're not required to do anything. Now, if I remember correctly, there were some meetings that the state held to consider it a historic district, but I haven't heard anything on how that finalized out. But again, that wouldn't have any impact on us. They were the ones that were putting up the funds to do the work.
Okay.
And then lastly, to talk about what the proposed detour during construction is. The roadway is proposed for full closure, so there won't be any like flagging or one-way access through the project corridor. Residents will have access to their homes. There may be short periods of time where the driveway is inaccessible, but you know, at the end of the construction day, you know, there will be access. It may be on kind of a dirt construction site type access, but there shouldn't ever be a time where residents have to, you know, overnight specifically park someplace far away. But there, there will be some interruption during the project. But the proposed detour is, is to take people pretty much up North Main Street or State Highway eighty-nine and around on County Highway V two. Do you have my pointer to the V A intersection here? So be a pretty short detour, local streets, well, I guess they're not local streets, but within the city compared to the detour for eighty-nine, the official detour being, you know, quite a ways around the city. So that's the proposed detour. And I guess with that, if you guys had any additional questions?
Then just to make it clear though, that since eighty-nine's road work is being delayed by a year, that anybody trying to get to the south end of Lake Mills will not be taking eighty-nine either because it'll be under road construction at the same time Mulberry Street is now because of that delay.
Correct, yep.
So it's going to be challenging.
Yeah, and it was pretty much the same detours that were proposed anyways. It's not a significant change. I think that some of the alternate traffic that might have used alternate routes may become more concentrated now because of the two projects at the same time. That's why we were proposing to do all the maintenance work that we would have done next year. We were planning to do this year, the maintenance on the north side of the city because South Main Street was going to be done. And then next year, we would do it on the south side because Mulberry was going to be done. And what we're proposing now is to do it all. So we redo Grove and Woodland Beach Road and a couple other ones. So that those roads that will be heavily traveled during the detours will be high quality.
Okay. But Lake, Lake Street won't be, West Lake won't be part of this.
I don't think we're going to do West Lake Street.
Even though it really needs it because it's going to be affected by the eighty-nine bypass?
Well, it will see detour traffic later in the year, from probably August through the end of the year. The issue with, with Lake Street, East Lake or West Lake Street?
West Lake.
Is it's got a hundred and twenty-year-old water main and a hundred and twenty-year-old sanitary sewer main and a significant number of lead lateral services. So I would hate to go in and put down a brand-new street to tear it all out again in a couple of years because we have to deal with those issues. You know, if we have to, we'll do some patching here and there, but.
I'd put a sign up someplace so we don't get too excited. Sorry, but it's because of lead laterals.
Yeah, West, West Lake Street is scheduled to be done in twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay.
One other thing I'd like to add is one modification to the Mulberry we've talked about as a result of Main Street was to try and do a phased approach to it. We previously were thinking we'd just have the contractor have access to the project corridor. For most of the construction season, that usually yields better prices, you know, more flexibility for the contractor. But what we, I think are going to do now is have the south end of the Mulberry Street project be available sometime later in the summer, like I don't know, June, let's say, and July timeframe, so that the north end of the Main Street project can get done and you don't have both projects happening right near the Commons Square area at the same time. So we would, we would start at maybe Fargo and go north at the beginning half of the summer for the Mulberry Street project. There are some underground utility kind of cut points there that would work well to kind of break the project at that point. So that's something I think we'll do that is an adjustment due to the Main Street project.
And we should.
That does make some sense.
Yeah, it helped. The utilities, the non-water sewer utilities like electric, telephone, cable, gas are going to start moving this fall.
Correct, yep, good point.
So it'll be like, if people are wondering what's happening, it's, all those utilities have to relocate for the street construction to start. Similar to what's happening on South Main Street. It's not really the road construction project, but it is. You know, people getting prepared, the utilities getting prepared for the relocations.
I have a concern. Suppose that in reliving the South Main Street contracts this fall indicates a permanent rise in prices. And I assume that will impact what we have to pay for Mulberry too, right? Question is, what happens then?
It'll be kind of like this year. We'll be, bids will be analyzed. They'll determine what's being consistent throughout the state based on the types of construction being done. So like water main, sanitary sewer main, asphalt curb, they'll evaluate those all in big units. And they'll make a determination if that's what's now going right. And when it is, they'll probably come back, particularly if we give more than one bid. And the anticipation is, is that having these two projects occur at the same time encourages a company to come in and bid on both jobs, give them good location, give them two big jobs to complete one year in a relatively small area. But yeah, we'll, we'll go through all the same analysis, make all the same determinations and try and determine, you know, where we're headed. It's, you know, we sat for three hours on last Thursday and debated all these topics from top to bottom. And I'm assuming we'll do that again and try to make another determination. If it, if it looks like that's the standard that's going forward in the future, then, then that's probably, we'll award the bid. If not, we'll have to figure out where we go from there.
We will be closely monitoring bids as they, you know, continue to come in through this year as well to make sure that where our estimate prices are still, you know, the same or do they need to be adjusted? You know, do we need to make cuts to the project someplace before we actually let it? You know, there's been a lot of kind of speculative talk about what is Foxconn going to do to the market, to the contracting market? And so we've been told that a lot of that work is coming out sometime this summer. And so we'll be keeping an eye on how prices are coming in and stuff as we move towards actually getting the project out for bids.
Do you see a Foxconn effect how far out into the state?
I don't, I don't want to speculate too much on that. I mean, I've, I've heard or we've been told from DOT that the anticipated workload is quite high and that the local contractors down there probably can't handle it. And so there will be some pull that direction is kind of a general. But I am certainly not an expert on any of this stuff or, you know, what the total value of that Foxconn work even is really. But we'll, we'll be keeping an eye on the environment, I guess, to make sure that this project is as little a surprise as possible when the bids come in. We're also, I think it's important to note the timing of the Mulberry Street bid letting is much earlier in the year than we did for Main Street. You know, advertising the project at the beginning of January traditionally is a good time. And then also the Main Street project, assuming we actually hit the November letting date that we've been talking about, will be known, I guess, who might have that project at that point. And so there might be a potential advantage there that, you know, you never know. It's always public bidding, but you know, somebody will already know that they're probably going to be here. Maybe Mulberry Street will be attractive to them, who knows?
Would there be some advantage for us to let our bid at the same time the state does theirs for South Main and we do ours for Mulberry so companies can do what you said?
Well, typically what the company will want to do is know if they won the bid or not to drive them to do the second bid. They're not going to want to bid both of them and drop them really low in the assumption that they're going to get both of them. They'll probably come in, bid the one straight up based on what they know. And then if they get that first one, that's good, then they'll say, okay, we can come in and do this on this project and drop it a little bit. So no, it's not necessarily a bad idea to do it that way. It's, it's.
We'll just be behind the state one by a few months.
Yeah, and I shouldn't say, are we betting it? It's going out on state bid, isn't it?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we didn't get the choice.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, this project goes through the full WISDOT process, all the approval processes, the plans, they're all WISDOT format. It'll be let by WISDOT.
Oh, okay.
Do you know what the deadline would be for filing for another grant?
Another SDP Urban Grant?
Uh huh.
For this project?
The extension, you mean the expansion of the scope or?
Whatever you were talking about that, that we could go for another grant.
Oh.
But it was unlikely we would get the money.
That was a request for just additional to the top of your, the grant you already have. It would be kind of saying, hey, do you have any leftover money in the pot that?
What would be the timeline on that?
Oh.
When would that happen?
We would have to do it pretty soon. I, I don't know the exact timeline, but I know that we do need to have a revised SMA drafted and signed by everybody because the original, SMA is State Municipal Agreement. That was originally signed for the original project scope. And so they need to revise the project scope, you know, the description of the project, the cost of the project, who's responsible for what portion of those costs, that whole agreement needs to be revised. And so I think we would need to do it before that is done.
And what part of the scope are you going to expand?
Part of the scope?
Yeah. I mean, we're already going from grant to Madison. You got, you've already got South Main Street and Mulberry where you're doing water and sewer on your own nickel. That alone is going to be well into the five million dollar category. That's going to be a tough swallow in one year.
Yeah, I, I think that what I've been told is that we, it would just be, do you have any additional money? That, you know, sometimes like what happened with Main Street, I guess, sometimes things happen and people's projects, they can't afford them anymore. Maybe they don't even do it at all. And all of a sudden, all the funding that was allocated for that project is available. Just kind of things like that, that it's kind of a, you know, like you said, Diane, it never hurts to ask kind of thing. You know, is there something available? And the timing, Vicki, I guess we'd, we'd want to probably explore that in the next like month or so, I would think, month or two.
Again, though, you have, not only do you have to pay to file for the grant, you also have to pay for your share plus all the utilities and other things that they're not paying for that you then have to expand into the project.
My understanding was that the physical limits of the project don't have to change from what we currently have. It was more so since your, your current project is more, much more expensive than what the grant dollars are, that you just kind of ask for additional funds for that same physical limits of the project. So it, in my understanding is that it, which really would be like additional free money, if you will, that you could ask. But again, I was told there was a pretty low chance we would be granted that. If, if there even is any additional funds available.
Well, maybe between the two of you, you can decide whether or not it's even feasible or warranted. I would imagine if you do apply for another grant though, it would have to come here for our approval. But you may find that there's absolutely no cost effectiveness at all. Why bother?
Or we could also find that it would take so much of our staff time that we don't have that staff time. You know, if it's very time consuming.
I think it's probably going to take Brandon's time, which means that there's a cost involved.
Yeah, I guess I, I don't know the exact process requesting those additional funds. It appeared to me from my conversation with the local program coordinator that it may be as simple as a letter. I don't believe that there's a formal application like the grant application for additional funding for an existing project.
And the engineering is already done.
Correct, yeah. So it, it might not really take that much. I mean, somebody drafting up a letter to request additional funding. Unless Steve, you've had other conversations about it.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't increase the scope, which is what we did the last time.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll assume that you could look into that, communicate with Steve. And if there's something we need to know, he'll let us know. And if we have to meet or have a special council meeting to approve it, so be it.
Okay.
Find out what the, what that is.
Processes, okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? No?
No.
All right. Where are we here? Item eight D, the ordinance eleven eighty-five zoning amendment from a single-family residential, public and institutional overlay district. Do you want to read this for me, Betsy?
Sure. Ordinance eleven eighty-five, amending section ten three two A, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, part of parcel two four six zero seven one three one four 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 zero zero zero. The city council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordinate as follows. Section one, section ten three two A, the official zoning ordinance and map of the City of Lake Mills are hereby amended to zone the following described properties from single-family four district with a public and institutional overlay to a single-family residential. Part of parcel two four six zero seven one three one four 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 zero zero zero. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Okay, that's the first reading. Okay, now, we can discuss this as is, right, Dan? Okay. Now, I just want to get back to where I can see things. Steve, you want to give the council a little, we've all looked at what you've given us, but do you want to give us a thumbnail on it?
This is located just south and a little bit west of the Ferry Street, Mill Street intersection. It's a part of the overall large parcel that makes up Lakeside Lutheran, which is a pretty large parcel, several thirty-one acre property. They're cutting out a small portion that is actually between two single-family homes already, but one is a teachage that's incorporated into the larger lot. This one will be cut, subdivided off as a CSM, which was included as part of the ordinance. It's proposed to be single-family, it, single-family R four, which is standard for that area. So it should be fine for a mix. Brandon's, or, Dustin's memo indicates that it's consistent with all the requirements and the concepts of the area. And he recommended approval. And the plan commission also recommended approval. And it's before you tonight. The person buying the lot, the proposed lot, would appreciate it if you would move this to the third reading as soon as possible. it if you would move this to the third reading as soon as possible. So, we have let the council president know that we don't see any reason why it couldn't be moved to the third reading.
Why is there a 4.5-foot sidewalk easement showing on the CSM?
The way the lot currently sets, when they put in, I don't know if you, you were, you and I worked on this one, the contractor who put in the sidewalks couldn't get it on the, couldn't get it to the outside of the property line based on making the ADA-required slopes work. And so what the school district did was give us some easements, and then built the sidewalk on private property.
Oh, okay. Is four and a half feet enough, because is ADA now five feet?
It's enough, we can slide it the other way, out into the right way. It's not that significant. I, we all looked at it and felt that it was adequate.
Is, is it normal to allow only a 10-foot clearance between a house and a lot line?
Yep. Actually, the way it works in an R...
Seems so close.
In an R14, this is that there's a 25-foot requirement with a minimum of 10 on one side. So, if, if you have 10 on the one side, you have to have 15 on the other side, or you can have two 12 and halves, or some variance in between, but that's how we do the zoning here.
Well, and we know we aren't gonna get complaints on that because the building is associated with the church and the school, so, okay. Well, is it the wishes of the council to make a motion to waive the second and third readings?
I move that we suspend the rules and go to, waive the second reading, go to the third.
And now, second.
So, we have a motion to do that. Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, we're now, we'll give you a minute to do your minute taking. When you're ready, would you read the title for the third reading, please?
Would you like me to read the entire one?
Just the title, you know, I think everybody knows what we're doing.
Sure. Ordinance 1185, amending sections 10-32A, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, part of parcel 246-0713-1444-000.
Okay. There it goes, trying to get my computer to do what I want it to do. All right, any discussion on this item before we look at the third reading? I think everybody's okay. So, now, we need a motion to approve this ordinance. I need a motion.
So, move.
And I need...
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve ordinance 1185. And any discussion before we do a vote? Okay, we can take a roll call vote on the third reading, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
I didn't mention it, but this did come with the motion to approve from the planning commission, so it did go through the right channels. Okay, that is approved, and somebody will notify them in the morning, probably. Ordinance 1186, would you read that one for us, please, Betsy, when you have a moment? When you're ready.
Ordinance 1186, repealing and recreating cross-connections in water supply regulations. The city council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does hereby ordain as follows. Section 1. Chapter 2, Title 4, Cross-Connections Water Supply is repealed, recreated, or renumbered as follows.
I'm gonna stop you. I don't think you have to read the whole thing. Okay, but this is the item that Steve alluded to earlier in the meeting, that we need to get on the books before the state meets with us, which is in two weeks.
Next Tuesday, no?
Oh, this coming Tuesday, okay. And this is housekeeping, right?
Right, we did have an ordinance, it wasn't quite as detailed as this one, this gives us a little more strength. Our old one was that the commercial industrials were required to submit a billing, an inspection every two years, but it didn't go into any details of how that was done. This one gives us more information that we can then hand to the DNR and say, this is how we're handling this, we've been authorized by the council to handle it in this fashion. Didn't, the old one didn't, you know, it said the building inspector was responsible for it, but it didn't tell him, you know, who he was supposed to notify that he was doing it, didn't even tell him that he really had to do it, that it was supposed to be submitted to him, but didn't say he was supposed to check up and make sure that it was done. This one goes through and takes care of all those issues for us. This one also includes residential.
Okay. And tonight, we're, it's on the agenda for the first reading, but we also really need to move this to the third reading. So, if we'd like to do the same thing we did with the last one, if someone would like to make that kinda motion to suspend the rules and go to, you know what I want.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the second reading, and go to the third.
Okay, that's our motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Now, is there any discussion on doing that? Otherwise, we will, when Betsy's ready.
Do you all know what a cross-connection is?
Yeah, there's a definition right here.
Good.
Yeah.
We were, I mean, there was a lot of definitions floating out there for a while that were, but basically what it does is says anything that can feed back into the public water supply, so if you leave your hose laying in a puddle outside, that's a cross-connection. If you have one of those old faucets that you can pull out and drop down into your sink, that's a cross-connection. And then there are multiple ones like fire suppression systems and all kinds of stuff that can feed some kinda contaminant back into the water supply system. Those are cross-connections, and they have to be inspected by DNR requirement. Very clearly spelled out to us, DNR requirements.
That's where all the backflow preventers come in, in maintaining them and certifying them.
Yes, most new equipment has backflow prevention devices built right into, but they need to have them inspected and checked on every so often to make sure that they're functioning properly. And even for an outside spigot, they have these things you can screw on that then create a vacuum break that is considered a cross-connection device. And so there, there's a lot of options out there, but this is the start of really pushing us over the edge into becoming aggressive in this. We are now the, we are now the aggressive water government.
And I think there needs to be a lot of education because when you said even a hose backfeeding water from a puddle, I don't think a lot of people realize that.
Can you tell you I didn't?
I didn't either.
My recommendation in working on this with, with Dan was maybe Dwayne and Paul could get together with Dave, and we could have a videotape made and put on the website to explain to people. They do such nice videotapes.
That's a good idea.
Dwayne's shaking, and I don't know if you can tell, but he's...
I just wanna mention for anyone who really wants to see what we're doing, to recommend you go to our city website to our tonight's meeting, the document that we're looking at is on there, you can see every word, every period, every comma, and it's right there. So, you know, please feel free to go and look at it. If you still don't understand it, give us a call in the morning, and somebody will explain it to you. But it's an important thing to get on the books because it's the direction things are moving, and we have to meet the requirements of the state, so. So, now, are you ready, Betsy?
We can do roll call now?
Roll call on suspending the rules and going to the third reading.
Correct. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, we are now at the third reading for ordinance 1186. Would you just read the title, please?
Ordinance 1186, repealing and recreating cross-connections in water supply regulations.
Thank you. Okay, now, are there any discussions, further discussions about this item before we vote on the third reading? Seeing none, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye, did we have to make a motion?
Oh, we need to make a motion.
There's a motion that needs to be made.
Thank you.
I was like, did I miss something?
Yeah, I missed that too.
Yeah, we need a motion for the third reading.
So, move.
Second.
Now, we got it. Daniel missed it. I just rely on you to make sure you catch it. Steve, good job.
No, I'm gonna follow, we caught it.
Okay, so now, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
We did it, okay, so now you can take this with you on Tuesday to the meeting. Do we have to do anything else for that meeting? Steve?
No.
We, you don't need the council?
No, we just need to show up and, and receive our direction.
Okay, recommendations for future agendas, I think we need to discuss whether we wanna set a date for, where do we leave things on our goals meetings, that we were going to get back to them?
We're gonna add Fire EMS on, onto the end of the next meeting. We are gonna look at creating a staff council study group to do Sandy Beach, and we're going to get a proposal on doing additional testing at the mill pond, and then we'll see where we direct that, and...
We won't have any more goals meetings yet?
Well, those are goal development meetings at the end of each council meeting. There'll be, there'll be an hour added on to each.
Okay.
I think the next one, what did we say, we were gonna work on Fire EMS at the next one, and then the next one will be something else.
Multi-use.
Multi-use, and then the next one will go back to Fire, and then the next one, and tell, and we, we said we could do it for two or three months, and then we could meet back with the consultants and try and finalize and prioritize.
Okay. Is everybody on board? So, we don't have any extra meetings, we just have longer meetings?
Yes, at this point. So, a couple of you will probably get attached to a committee that we hope can meet during, as early during the day as possible.
Okay. And those meetings will be part of a council meeting, so they'll all be televised and part of, everybody can be part of it?
No.
No.
Normally, we end the one meeting, and then we move into a study session, so it's not necessarily televised.
Okay, so these will still be work sessions?
Yes.
Works, okay, so we will, we will conclude our regular council meeting, move into a work session, but those will not be televised, but they are welcome to come here and listen to them if they'd like to.
Yep.
And I would recommend that whatever agenda gets put together for the work session, it be as specific as possible about what we're gonna be discussing, so then if somebody wants to come, they know to come.
And, and also... I'm assuming the first one is to start the conversation on, you know, where Fire EMS is heading with, with the overall community, and then the second one is malt, same with multi-use, is some type of proposal, where we're taking what we've gotten from the committee, and continue to work down from there, and then we can, you know, as it gets more, we can refine the agenda each time.
And we can always go as late as necessary, the night, 2:00 AM.
We're really into that, Doug, yeah.
Well, beats having another night. So, I agree with what Vicki said, I think if we can make sure that the agenda makes it very clear that we're, we're closed, we're adjourning the council meeting, and then something big-headed in the middle saying work session, and that it's, you know, not, not televised, maybe even put underneath so that, but people, like, I think there's a statement we had on the last goals meeting, that people were welcome to come, but it wouldn't be televised, so that same wording could be put under it, so that everybody's clear on what's going on.
Yeah, I think Vicki's comments were, we wanna make sure we stick to the item on the agenda and don't wander.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, too.
That too.
Okay, now, we're going to be, is there any other future agenda items before I go into the closed session jargon here? Okay, convening to a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin stats 19.85 per in 1 per in E per. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property when competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So, we will now be into closed session, so do I hit this? No, I'm just pointing.
Somebody has to have a motion, and we have to vote.
Oh, yeah, we need a motion. So, move by Doug?
Second.
Second by Vicki, thank you. And now, we're moved into closed.
No, we have to vote.
Don't we have to vote?
Yep.
Do you want a roll call?
Oh, you bet.
Okay.
Definitely.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Now, we're moving into closed session.
Yeah, now we...
Boy, I took a...